How many are running? So we were just, there are, we were just talking, we thought there were two.
No one else.
I'm doing public.
Have you, uh, would you sign?
David, were you able to get any signature? Oh, that's great. If you'll just turn that in and I'll get the last.
He should be.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May sixteenth, twenty twenty four edition of the Lexington City Council. Grateful for you all being here. Um, before I call the meeting to order, I want to remind folks that, uh, there is a public comment. Uh, if you do wish to address council, an opportunity to sign up. Um, and at the time that, uh, we do have, uh, citizens come and speak, we ask that you come and stand at this podium. And for the record, state your name, and if you are a resident of the city of Lexington, Virginia. Um, if you wish to be contacted after, uh, please provide your contact information to Janie House, Senator or Clerk. We ask that you make your comments to council as a whole. Uh, we ask that you be brief, state your position and provide facts. Uh, we ask that you provide written statements and or supporting materials again to our clerk for distribution to the council and city manager. Um, it is not an opportunity to debate, uh, but merely for us as a council to hear from you as citizens. And lastly, we ask that you speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. Uh, council, uh, will listen to anyone who wishes to speak and discussion will be, um, uh, limited to three minutes. If you're representing a group, uh, we do ask that you limit your minute, uh, your time to five minutes. And, uh, as a reminder to all of us, the city council meetings are formal proceedings and are recorded. Um, and with that, I would like to, uh, call our meeting to order. And the first item of business, I would ask that you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under one individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Uh, next item is consideration of the agenda. And, uh, there was request to insert between number nine, one consent agenda. And number ten, ten, one unfinished business to, uh, for city council to retreat into a closed session. Uh, the purpose of that is to discuss, um, the unfinished business and the request from Echelon. And, uh, because we anticipate there may be a chance that we would take some action. That's why we've placed it here instead of the end of our meeting as we typically do. And with that, uh, addition, are there any other items? And if there are no, uh, other concerns with that addition, we will approve the agenda as presented. And with that, we will move directly into proclamations and, um, I'm going to reverse the order. I'd like to, uh, invite Patrick Madigan up for, uh, National Public Works Week. Patrick, welcome. Thank you for, uh, being here to represent your team. Uh, proclamation of National Public Works Week, May nineteen through twenty five, twenty twenty four, advancing quality of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities. And to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Lexington. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals. Who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of Lexington to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty four marks the sixty-fourth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it resolved, I, uh, Frank Friedman with the city, uh, Lexington City Council, uh, do hereby designate the week, May nineteen through twenty five, twenty twenty four, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and advancing quality of life for all. Adopted the sixteenth day of May, two thousand twenty four. Patrick, uh, please accept this on behalf of, uh, city council and the citizens of Lexington and take it, um, happily and humbly to your staff.
Absolutely.
And turn here and smile for Jen.
Thank you. We enjoy serving the city of Lexington. I know on behalf of the staff, we, uh, we, we enjoy helping citizens and we get a lot of positive feedback. And you're part of our team, letting us know when things need to be, uh, attended to is very helpful to us. And so we appreciate that. So we can make sure we have a vibrant and, and safe city. So thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, it's hard to fix the leaky pipes if no one calls and tells you the pipes are leaking. So. Uh, next I'd like to invite up, uh, Chief Dickerson and, uh, whatever elements of the entourage or your bodyguards that you've brought here tonight. Absolutely. Always need the team. Absolutely, absolutely. Plus they make us look really good. Hey pal, welcome. Uh, offer this, uh, proclamation expressing the appreciation of the mayor and city council of Lexington, Virginia to the city of Lexington Fire Department and local emergency medical services agencies and providers. Whereas the men and women of the city of Lexington Fire Department and all EMS agencies serving the city of Lexington, Rockbridge County and the city of Buena Vista, provide a vital public service by responding to the EMS needs of our residents and visitors. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out of hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to tele- telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out of hospital care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Where, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, we, the mayor and Lexington City Council, call upon all citizens of Lexington to observe the week of May nineteen through twenty five, twenty twenty four, as Emergency Medical Services Week, during which all of our residents may join in celebrating the dedication of our local EMS providers past and present and their families who support, whose support allows them to serve our community. Adopted the sixteenth day of May, twenty twenty four. Chief, please accept this on behalf of a grateful council and a grateful city and, and our citizens. And as I read that and the public works, um, I'm reminded at the, the time, the effort and dedication uh, as leaders that you all have, uh, leading your teams and the great work that the teams do again, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Real credit to these folks, volunteer and career who actually do the lift every day, thirty-two hundred times a year. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, shoot. But as they, uh, file out, I identify a, a document that I meant to read in addition to the proclamation. Uh, and I'll share with all of you, um, chief would probably a little bit red faced, but, uh, Mary Cowling is a longtime resident of Lexington, Virginia. And currently a resident of the Kendall community. And, uh, she wrote to me last week, uh, back on April eleventh, uh, she turned on the oven in her kitchen at about five, ten PM in preparation for cooking a pot pie. Uh, fortunately, she was still standing at the stove when she heard a pop and the coil in the bottom of the oven, uh, had snapped. Sparks began to fly and then flames, uh, uh, appeared. She immediately called Kendall's maintenance and nine-one-one and within five minutes, um, twelve capable firefighters arrived. And, uh, the flame was out. The damage was completely contained in the oven itself. And, um, the firefighter stayed there to make sure, on premises, to make sure that her, um, kitchen, her apartment and the Kendall community was all in good shape. Um, she has included a, uh, check, uh, to deliver to the chief and the firefighters as a contribution, as, as she said, a small token of, uh, her, uh, enormous gratitude. And, uh, that we are fortunate in Lexington and Rockbridge County to have such dedicated, able public servants who can, um, who can move fast. So from, uh, Mary Cowling and, um, I'll look forward to sharing that with chief and, um, getting that contribution to the, uh, fire department's, uh, accounts. So. Uh, they do amazing work quietly. Um, uh, if Mary hadn't written, I don't think any of us would have ever been aware of that circumstance. So. I think that's, uh, speaks volumes to the, uh, good work that our fire department and EMS teams do. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. Uh, the May second, uh, city council meeting minutes were in your packet. And unless there's an objection to approving them as presented, they will stand approved. Uh, they are approved. Uh, next item is citizens' remarks and comments. And again, we welcome, uh, anyone who would like to come and speak, uh, to, um, city council. And I would like to invite up, uh, Elizabeth Donahoe to, uh, signed up. Thank you. Elizabeth, thanks for being with us. You can pull that down. It's very flexible.
I'm short, so. I hate to bring down the mood of the house after the awards and whatnot, but, um, I've had an ongoing problem on my street and my neighborhood of Diamond Hill that is, is completely out of control. VMI cadets are taking over every inch of our parking. They have, from what I understand, is fourteen party houses in our neighborhood. Uh, I personally had one right next door to me. I live at one oh six. The rental house was at one oh four. Every weekend that they are in school and sometimes during the week. They jog in their little gray t-shirts and black shorts and go out and buy beer, come back, pound them and run back to school. I'm tired. I'm over it. The foul language, the urinating in public. The vomiting in the middle of my street. I mean, my fault. I expected a bit more from the cadets than I expected from Washington and Lee students and what, I, you know, they get kind of crazy, but the house next to me, I bought my house in nineteen ninety-nine. And for twenty years, Washington Lee students, families, this and that, it, every, no problems. Twenty twenty, when the cadets moved in, totally different game. Totally different set of rules seemingly. They don't care. They just do what they, and I continuously, because it's the only avenue I have, is to call the police about the noise ordinance, the parking, the this, the that, the screen. And I'm sure by now, they are so sick of hearing my name or seeing my name on their agenda or my address. I'm sure they just roll their eyes and they go, oh God, you know, what is this woman doing? You know, I'm tired. My home is my sanctuary. It's where I live. It's where I try to watch a movie, read a book and relax. And I can't do that with these juveniles screaming in the middle of the street, throwing beers at each other, partying on the roof of the house, crushing cans, throwing the, at passing cars. I, I don't know what to do anymore. I, and unless we get the school involved in solving this issue, I don't see that it's going to change. They have rules about these things, about them living off campus. And I realized with the homes, they found a loophole because they get their parents to rent them. And then they feel like they can do whatever they want. I regularly have at least seven on my section of Tucker Street, which is only half of it, seven cadet cars that I have identified by watching them get in and out of their cars parked down our street. My mother has to call me and ask when she's got a doctor's appointment, can I stop by? Is there somewhere I can park? Family, friends or postal worker, she has to park in the middle of the street because there's nowhere for her to go. I mean, I can only speak for Tucker Street, but I know what's going on all over Diamond Hill. I was at the community meeting in December and nothing has happened since. I was told personally by Colonel Bogart, the commandant of cadets, that there were fourteen of these homes in our neighborhood. I just truly believe if this was happening on Jefferson Avenue, it would have been figured out a long time ago. And I'm sorry, you know, we don't have the same tax base as everybody else, but it doesn't mean we don't want to enjoy our homes in peace and quiet. And not, and I'm not saying there have been parties in the house next to me, just not every weekend. Every single weekend. And like I said, during the week. I'm tired and I have gone to VMI. I have, the police have been, the Lexington police have been extremely understanding and given me every bit of advice that they can, but they can only go so far. It's this catch twenty-two with them. They can only do so much, but the school has these, but the school won't do anything about it.
Right.
So I'm asking city council or the city of Lexington itself to get them to do something about this. I, I can't take another year of this. I can't. It's been four. Since twenty twenty, that house has been animal house.
Right. Well, greatly appreciate you coming and making us aware of it. And I'm glad that you've participated in the public meetings that have worked, been in, um, in, in effort to, uh, address the issues. Um, if you didn't include your telephone number or, or email address on, on the signup sheet, please share that with Janie so we can follow up with you, um, to talk about some course of actions.
Certainly.
And, and the things, um, I perceive, um, that the police are not rolling their eyes when they see your, your name or number. Um, they, they have a responsibility for keeping the peace and.
And they made that clear and they've been very, very understanding.
Yeah. So it, it, um, one of the challenges with, uh, neighbors, um, you, you don't get to necessarily choose who your neighbors are. Um, when they're out of town or they're just bad neighbors, it's not a good circumstance. So we, we look forward to, uh, working with you. Um, within the constraints of, uh, helping neighbors to be better neighbors.
Well, my point is cadets are not supposed to be my neighbors. They're not supposed to have outside.
I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I look at, um, all of us that live in Lexington are neighbors. VMI is our neighbor up on the hill. Uh, as they infiltrate the neighborhoods, uh, there is an issue and, um, I'm sorry that you haven't had satisfaction with, um, the, the brass at VMI, but I look forward to city manager following up with you to, uh, uh, lead the charge and, um, getting your neighborhood in, in a better situation.
And I, I will say, I did see, uh, parking enforcement driving around the neighborhood, uh, this week. So I do think they're stepping up, uh, in the area. I know it doesn't solve all the problems, but I did see parking enforcement.
It's sporadic.
Yeah. There, I see, I did see him in the neighborhood. Just sad.
Yes. And I see him in the neighborhood, but it's sporadic.
I understand. I understand.
Thank you very much for, for being here. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council this evening? Yes, sir. Mr. Alexander, welcome.
Alexander, uh, I live two twelve North Lower Street. We all have been to the meetings about, uh, the parking of the VMI students and, um, on Peyton and Lower Street, it is a mess. There were about ten to thirteen cars parked all the way down the street. And I'm aware of VMI students probably owning maybe two of the houses down there. But then, you know, it's like we call all of our friends to park our big trucks and cars all the way up the street and too close to the fire hydrant taking up the space of the gentleman that lives on the corner of Peyton to where if he pulls his truck in or anybody that comes in to park when he, you know, loans his house out, if they park in that spot, they're going to get a ticket because it's right against the edge of the street and the fire hydrant. You know, and, uh, I have pictures of the way that they park all the way down through there. And, um, I think some of it's unnecessary. And I know that the, um, traffic, um, guy comes down, does what he does. But one morning I came out and I seen him trying to edge out in the street to get out and he practically got hit. And he just eased out and he looked at me and then I kind of looked at him. You know, and I was hoping that he would see what some of the people that comes up Peyton, comes out of Peyton have to deal with. They can't see around the left side of all these cars parked down there. What's the traffic is coming up? He's coming out. They had to pull out in the street to see around. It's no problem with the traffic coming down the street because, you know, you can see that. And, uh, we continuously get told in some of the meetings, watch what you ask for. Now, rather that is permit parking or our cars would get told off that, from the people that live on that street, you know? I think we pay taxes in, uh, on, on Lower Street by our cars not to get, you know, towed for, you know, being parked in front of our homes. But it's two houses down there that people own that these VMI students cars are, you know, taking their spots. And, um, I feel it's it's going to be a problem one of these days, especially down Peyton when the EMS or fire department has to come up there to take care of something and all these cars are parked there. No way to get in touch with the students to move their. No way to get in touch with the students to move their cars. You know, we like to protect our neighborhood through there.
Right.
That's, I'd, like I said, I do have pictures of everything parked down through there. How they park, where they park in front of the houses that are owned by residents that, you know, pay taxes.
Right.
So if, you know, anybody needs pictures to see what I'm talking about, I can gladly. Email them to the city council or whoever needs to see them. I showed them to the chief. It didn't really. Do any good. Just looked at them real quick. I showed them to the. VMI guys and they were willing to look at it. They looked at them and took the time to look at it. And they did ask for license plate numbers and. What type card was, and I sent them all that information. Okay. And this happened to be close to the weekend. He said, I will take care of that. So. They were moving by Friday. But Monday.
Right back.
We're back again. So, you know. It would be nice to, you know, have something. Taken care of with, without. The residents that live on that street. Always having to hear, be careful what you ask for or parking permits.
Right.
And I, I personally don't feel that. We. You know. Have to have parking permits on property that. We take care of. We own and we pay taxes on. And. That's about all I have to say.
Well, thank you for coming and sharing your experience. If you don't mind, I'd greatly appreciate for council's benefit. If you can. Email it to Janie and she can get it distributed to all of council to see the pictures and. I know the city manager will follow up with the chief and discuss this issue. Look for resolutions on it, but the, as I get ready to move to Main Street. I'm reminded it's not my street, it's the main street and parking folks that work at the Mayflower. They have the privilege of parking on the street and so. Already having a little bit of a rude awakening. It just because it's in front of my house doesn't make it my parking space as much as I'd like for it to be. And so that's one of the challenges of public streets to be sure, but. But cadet cars that are not supposed to be in Rockbridge County are a separate issue. And I know that'll be addressed. The city manager with our colleagues at VMI.
Alright.
Thank you for being with us. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council this evening? Interesting, on the. On the day of graduation at VMI, it may be quiet tomorrow and not quite as bad, I hope for, for the residents of. Diamond Hill in particular. If no one else wanting to speak to council, we'll move on to the consent agenda and ask for council's consideration.
I think a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion of second, roll call vote. Mr. Betts. Ms. Strawn.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Alli Good.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander. A motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. At this time, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we will be going into closed session. And I'll, Ms. Alexander will be reading, but it's to discuss the requests from Echelon. And when we come out, we will continue with the meeting, but I'll excuse everyone, but council and staff from the meeting at this point.
I move that the city council of the city of Lexington convene enclosed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3. For the purpose of discussing and considering the disposition of publicly held real property at 626 Waddell Street and Spotswood Drive. For discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. Virginia Code 2.2-3711A29. For the purpose of discussing and considering the award of an amended public contract with Urban Core Realty LLC. And Echelon Resources Incorporated pertaining to 626 Waddell Street and Spotswood Drive. Where the contract amendment will involve the expenditure of public funds and discussion in an open meeting. Would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy and. 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel retained by city council on specific legal matters requiring legal advice. I've made the motion. Ms. Berry.
Thank you for the second and roll call vote. Ms. Strawn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Mr. Betts. Mr. Alli Good. I vote aye and I'll wait for the mayor.